All right, I hope everybody can hear me okay. Thank you all for being here. We'll, it's right at six o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Sarah, when you're ready?
Mayor Holland?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Messer?
Here.
Commissioner Finch?
Here.
Commissioner Normisle?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Viglum?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And just to reiterate, we have some presentations for a retired police officer, lifeguard. Seeks will come available as we progress into the meeting. Like I said, we do want to stay compliant and legal and abide by the laws as everybody else does. So I appreciate everybody's understanding and I appreciate you all being here. At this time, I'd like to invite up one of my closest friends, Bob Messig, to lead us into our invocational prayer. I think he might have went outside to save a space. Lieutenant Odom, would you check outside and see if Mr. Bob Messig is outside for me, please, sir? There he is. He did. Hey, Bob. Got you right up here on the podium, sir. There should be a hot mic up there for you.
There you go.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you for being here, sir.
All righty. Lord, we want to thank you so much for this opportunity for us all to get together, to learn for what is best for our town. We ask that you guide us and lead us towards your will, because it is your will we are after. If we're after your will, we know we will be on track for what is best for our town. Lord, we ask that you continue to look after our needy and our suffering. We ask that you please keep an eye on us during this hurricane season and forever after. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Bob. Thanks for being here. You just lay it right down right there. Thank you so much for coming. Everyone, please stand and face the flag with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item number five on the agenda would be the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. At this time, I'd like to invite up to the podium Police Chief Mike Panzarella, and so that we can formally recognize retired police Sergeant Nick Gattuso.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to come before you to recognize the retirement of Sergeant Nick Gattuso. Nick, if you'll join me at the podium, please. Assistant Chief Edwards, if you'll join me at the podium, please. Greg, if you will, please play the video.
5:30. 10:30. 10:45. On behalf of Carteret County and the Town of Emerald Isle, we'd like to thank you for your 30 years of dedication to service to our communities. We wish you nothing but the best of luck on your retirement and wish you the best of your future. On the 27th day of July 2023 at 1700 hours, it is our pleasure to acknowledge your last call and the start of your retirement.
All five, thank you, appreciate it. Take care of your kids.
5:00. 5:30. It's been a pleasure for the world over the past few years. Wish you the best in retirement. Good luck, sir.
Thank you, Bob.
5:45. Sergeant has been working with you over these 30 years. We appreciate your time. And we appreciate your dedication to the town of Emerald Isle. And we sincerely appreciate your dedication to the town of Emerald Isle. Happy to have you here, my friend.
Thank you, Bob. I miss you most.
5:10 to 5:30. It's been an honor. Thanks for keeping everybody safe.
Thank you, Bob. Take care of your family. On behalf of Sergeant Gattuso and the Emerald Isle Police Department, many thanks to Mark Cruz for producing that video for us. Tonight should be a happy night, but yet it's bittersweet as we say not goodbye, but see you later to a longtime serving law enforcement professional. Sergeant Gattuso began his career in 1993 with the town of Pine North Shores. Since beginning his career, he has worked for the town of Emerald Isle, the Brunswick County Sheriff's Office, the town of Leland, before returning to his home here in Emerald Isle. Sergeant Gattuso worked for the town of Emerald Isle for a total of 26 years. I've had the distinct honor and pleasure of knowing Sergeant Gattuso our entire careers. So here's a couple of things I would say about Sergeant Gattuso, and I feel like those that worked with him would say the same. He is loyal, he is dedicated, he cares deeply for those he worked with and supervised, he's genuine, he's honest, and he's fair. While I just said a couple of nice things about Nick, Nick was a bit of a problem. And so what I mean by that is everybody in the department wanted to work for Nick. Why? Because Nick wasn't a micromanager. He allowed those under his command to think for themselves along with his guidance. And as you heard him say in his last call video, he was like a father figure to them, and he referred to those under his command as his kids. Sergeant Gattuso, on behalf of the men and women of the Emerald Isle Police Department, we wish you all the best in retirement. Thank you for your service and dedication to our great profession and, most importantly, to the town of Emerald Isle. At this time, we would like to present you with a couple of things. First of all, we'd like to present you with a shadow box on behalf of the department, which displays both our old patch, our new patch, your sergeant stripes at the rank you retired at, your collar emblems, the medals of honor that you received, and your ID badge. At this time, I'd ask the mayor to come forward to read a couple of proclamations.
Can you help me hold this stuff when I get there? Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. All right, I'm a pretty sappy guy. We'll see if I can get through this in one try. Nick, first of all, thank you so much. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve alongside you, and my only regret, like some retirees before you, is I didn't get the opportunity to do it longer. Have a couple of things I'd like to read for you. First off, is the resolution, excuse me, awarding service sidearm and badge to retiring police sergeant Dominic Nick Gattuso. Whereas General Statute 20-187.2 provides that retiring members of municipal law enforcement agencies may receive, at the time of their retirement, the badge worn or carried by them during their service with the municipality. And whereas General Statute 20-187.2 further provides that the governing body of the municipal law enforcement agency may, in its discretion, award to a retiring member of the service sidearm of such retiring member. And whereas Dominic Nick Gattuso began his career as a sworn law enforcement officer of the Emerald Isle Police Department on August 7, 2002, and is now retiring as sergeant from the Emerald Isle Police Department on July 31, 2023. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners in the Town of Emerald Isle, North Carolina as follows. The town manager or his designee is hereby authorized, in accordance with the provisions of General Statute 20-187.2, to transfer Dominic C. Gattuso, the badge worn by him during his service with the Emerald Isle Police Department and his service sidearm, a Smith &amp; Wesson M&amp;P 40 caliber handgun, serial number HSJ 9310. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that the Emerald Isle Board of Commissioners extend best wishes for many years of good health and happiness to Nick Gattuso during his retirement and all of his future endeavors. Adopted this 8th day of August, 2023, Jason Holland. Thank you, sir. All right. Got that one down. It wasn't too bad. All right. The Town of Emerald Isle Board of Commissioners in appreciation for dedicated service. Whereas the Town of Emerald Isle does desire to recognize and honor public officials of the town for dedicated and distinguished service to the community, and whereas we are all aware of the many demands made upon a public servant and the many hats one wears, we are also aware that the rewards in the profession are few and far between, but the quality and quantity of the work are nevertheless. Whereas Dominic C. Gattuso, Nick, has rendered dedicated service to the Town of Emerald Isle and has made significant accomplishments in the areas of policing and community engagement, and whereas he has given so much of himself through the years by serving Emerald Isle, but little thought is given to the time swiftly passing by. Whereas there comes a time when all too soon, that chapter must come to an end and a new one begins. Whereas Nick has been a true gift to his coworkers, mayors, and boards, and whereas it is the desire of the Town of Emerald Isle to recognize Nick's dedicated service as he completes this chapter. Now, therefore, I, Jason Holland, Mayor of Emerald Isle, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, extend our sincerest best wishes to Nick as he undertakes this new chapter in his book of life, a chapter that includes doing whatever he pleases, whenever he pleases, a chapter entitled Retirement. Proclaim this 8th day of August, 2023, Jason Holland, Mayor. Thank you again, sir. And just one more certificate of our appreciation to hang on the wall there. That is for you. And love putting people on the spot, so have a few words for us?
Y'all just trying to make grown men cry and everything. I guess he mentioned a book. It's been an interesting book, and I'm not 100% ready to put it down or put it on the shelf, but I am going to put it down to kind of focus on being a better husband, son, brother, homeowner, because I've got too many projects to do around the house and slowly getting to them, but I'm not a public speaker.
Thank you again, sir. Congratulations.
Good job, Sparky.
Yes, sir.
All right. Item number six, suggested motion is a motion to approve the resolution awarding service sidearm and badge to retiring police sergeant Dominic C. Gattuso. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you. All right, at this time, we have some more recognition in honor of some more heroes. So while, I'll ask first for our, let's get the lifeguard. Yeah. Real American heroes, if there ever was some, our lifeguards, ladies and gentlemen. Yes, sir, right up here is fine.
For the record, I looked like that when I was young. You still do, Jim.
All right, we got everybody? All right. All right. First off, cue video, please.
Every day, as the sun rises over the horizon, a group of remarkable individuals gather along the shores of Emerald Isle. They are the lifeguards who protect and watch over our beloved community.
I was trying to become a lifeguard just by knowing I was going to work on the beach every day and get to go into the ocean, help some people out.
I mean, I've always loved the ocean, and I've always loved this town and the people that live here, and I figured this was a good job to kind of merge the two together and be able to be around the water all day and protect the people that I enjoy being around, so.
Just love the ocean and being outside and also love working with people, helping people. So this job is kind of like the intersection of those two things.
I've always wanted to have a career of taking care of people and helping out. I feel like this is a good way to start out.
With unwavering commitment to protect the lives of others, these lifeguards embody the spirit of service every day. This is not just a job. It's a calling that requires courage, skill, and a profound sense of responsibility. Welcome to the world of our lifeguards, where ordinary people become extraordinary heroes, making a difference with each rescue, each act of compassion, and each preventive measure taken to ensure the safety of all who visit our shores.
The best part about being a lifeguard is just knowing that you've made a difference in somebody's life, whether it's that person or somebody who loves them, and being able to be part of something bigger than just your everyday, normal life.
The best part of being a lifeguard is probably the brotherhood and sisterhood that this team brings to us, and the physical fitness aspect of it is amazing, so it's a good time.
They are the ones who ensure that families can build sandcastles, that surfers can catch the perfect wave, and that beachgoers can bask in the sun without worry.
Becoming a lifeguard has affected my life. I've definitely worked on my communication and teamwork skills, and then also just being able to adapt to high-stress situations. I mean, you're under a lot of pressure to perform, and kind of going through that every day has really helped me step up my, like, kind of level-headedness with that sort of thing.
Helped me learn a lot about responsibility, keeping me alert even when you're working long days, and just making sure that you're always prepared for the worst and you're always also prepared for the best. You never know what could happen out here, so just learning how to be on my toes and be alert at all times.
But they cannot do it alone, for their strength lies not only in their individual abilities, but also in the unwavering support of a close-knit team, a team bound by a shared purpose and an unbreakable bond. We are immensely grateful for their service and the countless lives they have safeguarded.
It's an honor to represent Emerald Isle. It's a great town. It's just really cool being that idol on the beach, just being able to take care of people and be the reference point on the beach for the town, so it's cool.
Being a lifeguard for the town of Emerald Isle is like waking up every day and then getting to go hang out with your friends all day long. A lot of us come and go, but we all get pretty tight by the end of the season.
Super rewarding, like, the work you do. You feel a lot of gratitude from the public, and then also just from, like, the firemen and being around the station, there's a lot of camaraderie. I mean, it's kind of like a big family.
Working for the town of Emerald Isle, it's honestly been an amazing experience for me. Everybody I've met has been very upstanding and outgoing to try and help you with anything that you might need. It's just been a really amazing experience, definitely the best work environment I've ever worked in, so.
Very nicely done video. If I could get you men and women to come up front with me, I want to, I have a proclamation for you all as well. All right, it's time now. Before I read the proclamation, just take a good look to my left and right, guys. These are our beach heroes right here. I've heard countless stories of countless lives being saved, so many stories of these men and women educating, not only saving lives, not only rescuing people, but educating our public on the importance of, you know, the dangers of rip currents, the importance of filling holes back in so that they in the fire department, the rescue department, can get to anyone in the case of an emergency. So they obviously don't just sit in a lifeguard stand and hang out all day. These people educate the public, they show up every day, they keep themselves in peak physical condition, they save lives, and you can't say enough good things about that. And with that being said, the Town of Emerald Isle Board of Commissioners in recognition of Emerald Isle lifeguards. Whereas the beautiful coastal and inland beaches of Emerald Isle represent a world-renowned recreational source, and whereas residents and visitors alike are drawn to these beaches by the millions each year for water and beach activities, and whereas the aquatic environment has dangers, particularly rip currents, that can be effectively managed through public awareness and the vigilance of professional lifeguards, and whereas for reasons of public safety, an annual reminder of joys and hazards associated with the aquatic environment are appropriate at the commencement of the busy summer beach season, whereas residents and visitors alike are safer because of our lifeguards. Now, therefore, I, Jason Holland, Mayor of Emerald Isle, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim August 8, 2023, as Lifeguard Appreciation Day in Emerald Isle. Proclaim this 8th day of August, 2023, Jason Holland, Mayor. Congratulations and thank you all. I just want to add that, contrary to popular belief, I do get some time off and I do sleep sometimes. But when I see these calls go out after hours, after 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock on the weekends, and I'm looking at the CAD notes on my phone, and I see the lifeguard supervisor, or lifeguard three, or West Tower, and you're seeing these notes coming out, just understand that these professionals here have been trained, and they are the best that we on Boog Banks have working for us and protecting us. Okay? I've watched a number of them grow over the years. Some of them have gone and already got further EMS education, further fire certification, possibly making it into a career, putting the next line of public servants out there. So with that, guards, thank y'all. Started the season, haven't been out there. As some may know, very much hands-on, in the water, practicality, but excellent job. Rachel, excellent job. Kenzie in Austin, Ansonori, he is on shift tonight, and I told him to stay at the station for the sheer factor of we have an occupant load issue when I first walked in here, and we do have three guards still on the beach strand right now, patrolling. So we are still protected. Thank you all, guards. Excellent job. All right. Item number eight would be the introduction of a couple of new employees. We have a video for that, I understand? No? Okay. Want to welcome Mr. Michael Lewis, our newest Emerald Isle police officer, and also would like to welcome Mr. Nathan Rue, our planning director. Did I steal your thunder?
Say it again. Sorry about that.
Not at all. I got ahead of myself a little bit. I apologize. No problem at all. Thank you again for the opportunity to come before you. Always a pleasure to come and introduce new members of our department. Tonight, I have the distinct pleasure of introducing our newest patrol officer, Michael Lewis. With Michael is his field training officer, Officer Tucker Robinson. Michael comes to us from Guilford County, which is around, which is in the Greensboro area. Officer Lewis has almost 10 years law enforcement experience, including time in a specialized unit, where he has some unique experiences which will benefit our team. As we continue to protect and serve the residents and visitors of Emerald Isle, we are very excited to welcome Officer Lewis to our team. Thank you very much, sir. Lost one and got another one. Mr. Zap?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Nathan Rue, please?
Absolutely. Yeah, as Nathan makes his way to the podium, this is more of, I think, a coming home, if you will, back to Carteret County. So we are thankful to have Nathan joining our team as planning director. He's been with us, his first official day was July 17, so he's quickly coming up on week three-plus. So at this time, we'd like to introduce both Nathan to the Board of Commissioners and to the public. And Nathan, if you want to share a little bit about who you are and how you arose here and where we're going, we'd appreciate it.
To come back up here to help me, but, so yeah, I'm originally from Beaufort, born and raised. My parents still live there. I've been in municipal government for about 17 years, started my career with the town of Beaufort, in fact, in public works, worked my way up to building inspector for a while there. Moved to Lenore for a few years, continued my career, came back towards the coast. Prior to me coming to Emerald Isle, I was in La Grange as the planning, director of planning inspections and safety for five years, moved and then started with Holly Ridge for the last four years prior to coming to Emerald Isle. So I'm excited, wish I had a video like the other guys, but hey, maybe one day. Just don't get me on the beach doing the exercise stuff. My career won't last that long. So I am happy to be here, excited, you know, it's, you always look for different chapters in your life, and this one has started off as being a good page turner, so can't wait to see what the future holds with you guys.
Thank you, sir, and welcome. Trying not to jump ahead of anybody else here. I believe item number nine would be a police department update. Invite Chief Panzarella back to the podium.
Again, for a third opportunity to come before you tonight to talk a little bit about our police department and some of the updates. I think it's important for you to know, first of all, in the month of our first fiscal year in July, our department received 1,766 calls with a response time of 6 minutes and 19 seconds. So far this year, we've issued 1,366 golf permits, and just prior to the meeting, in the first eight days of being able to apply for beach driving permits online, we've issued 143. The police department oversees 13 community programs. I'm going to talk about four of them tonight. The first one is police educating the public. Please feel free to come and join us the third Tuesday of every month at 10 a.m. Last pep was facilitated by Assistant Chief Edwards. It was on pedestrian and bicycle safety, where we had between 10 and 15 attendees with two visitors from the Winterbowl Police Department who heard about what we were doing down here in Emerald Isle and wanted to come down and check us out and see what it was all about. Our Coffee with a Cop is the fourth Thursday at 9 a.m. of every month, where we generally have 25-plus attendees. It's a great time to come out, share ideas, questions, concerns that you may have which are law enforcement-related. Our Neighborhood Watch program, we're always looking for volunteers. That meeting is held on the first Tuesday of every month at 4 p.m. Unless it is a quarterly meeting, that meeting is held at 6 p.m. We generally try to feature a guest speaker to provide some insight, not necessarily on Neighborhood Watch, but maybe about the town and what the town is doing. The fourth one is golf cart advisory. That's on the third Tuesday of every month at 5:30 p.m. The police department oversees all permitting outside of building permits. So if you need a parking permit, a golf cart permit, disaster reentry permit, we oversee those programs. We just completed a promotional process for our new sergeant to replace Sergeant Gattuso and a new community resource officer to replace Officer Delorme who resigned. We want to remind everybody about Stuff the Cruiser, which will be happening August the 14th through the 18th. Please come out and help us give back to our community and help those that are... So am happy to be here, excited, you know, it's, you always look for different chapters in your life, and this one has started off as being a good page turner, so can't wait to see what the future holds with you guys.
Thank you, sir, and welcome. All right, trying not to jump ahead of anybody else here. I believe item number nine would be Police Department Update. Invite Chief Panzarella back to the podium.
Again, for a third opportunity to come before you tonight, to talk a little bit about our Police Department and some updates. I think it's important for you to know, first of all, in the month of our first fiscal year in July, our department received 1,766 calls with a response time of 6 minutes and 19 seconds. So far this year, we've issued 1,366 golf permits, and just prior to the meeting, in the first eight days of being able to apply for beach driving permits online, we've issued 143. The Police Department oversees 13 community programs, I'm going to talk about four of them tonight. The first one is Police Educating the Public. Please feel free to come and join us, the third Tuesday of every month at 10:00 a.m. Last pep was facilitated by Assistant Chief Edwards, it was on pedestrian and bicycle safety, where we had between 10 and 15 attendees with two visitors from the Winterbowl Police Department who heard about what we were doing down here in Emerald Isle and wanted to come down and check us out and see what it was all about. Our Coffee with a Cop is the fourth Thursday at 9:00 a.m. of every month, where we generally have 25-plus attendees. It's a great time to come out, share ideas, questions, concerns that you may have which are law enforcement related. Our Neighborhood Watch Program, we're always looking for volunteers. That meeting is held on the first Tuesday of every month at 4:00 p.m., unless it is a quarterly meeting, that meeting is held at 6:00 p.m. We generally try to feature a guest speaker to provide some insight, not necessarily on Neighborhood Watch, but maybe about the town and what the town is doing. The fourth one is Golf Cart Advisory, that's on the third Tuesday of every month at 5:30 p.m. The Police Department oversees all permitting outside of building permits, so if you need a parking permit, a golf cart permit, disaster reentry permit, we oversee those programs. We just completed a promotional process for our new Sergeant to replace Sergeant Gattuso, and a new Community Resource Officer to replace Officer Delorme who resigned. We want to remind everybody about Stuff the Cruiser, which will be happening August the 14th through the 18th. Please come out and help us give back to our community and help those that are less fortunate in our school system. Let me go back in touch with the oncoming of our new Community Resource Officer. Last year, we received a donation of four bicycles through the federal government. They were free of charge to the Emerald Isle Police Department. Our new Community Resource Officer will aid greatly in standardizing that program up, so hopefully soon you will see more law enforcement officers on bicycles. This will help us get to areas that you might not necessarily can get to with a patrol car. You know, if it's full, the pier parking lot's full, it's not always easy to navigate one of our vehicles around there, a bicycle will help us in doing that. You have mobile home parks on either side, it'll allow us to get in there. Obviously with the town developing Village West, you'll see us more in that area and along the bike path as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, item number 10 would be our public announcements.
All right, it's time now for our August public announcements. First up is Emerald Fest. We have two more concerts scheduled for this year, August 10th and August 17th. They start at 6:30 p.m. at the Western Regional Ocean Access. Bring a lawn chair or blanket to sit on, no alcohol, please. It's time to start registering for your beach driving permits. Here's a short video explaining the process.
Hi, I'm Brian Videl with the Emerald Isle Police Department. It's that time of the year again for beach driving. Beach driving permits will go on sale starting August 1st for the Beach Driving 2023-2024 season. Beach driving permits will be available only online for the month of August. Starting in September, you can apply for the permit either online at emeraldisle-nc.org or in person at the Police Department at 7500 Emerald Drive. Each applicant will be required to watch a short educational video and read the rules and regulations, then take a short quiz before being able to apply for their permit. Applicants must score at least an 80 on the quiz. You'll be required to attach your quiz results to your application along with proof of driver's license and vehicle registration. When your permit is ready for pickup, the Police Department will either call you or email you. If you have any questions about the beach driving permits, you can check the town's website, or you can call 252-354-2021. Enjoy your beach driving season.
Registration is now open for the EI Fishing Tournament. Let's check out the promo video.
Fish on!
There you go!
Get ready for your chance to win. Join us for the Emerald Isle Fishing Tournament on September the 16th. There's something for everyone with a boating and surf division. Everyone is invited to our public auction and barbecue dinner at the Allard Hotel and Resort. This event supports our local scholarship program and dredging. Special thanks to The Real Outdoors and Tracker Country and all our sponsors. Scan the QR code or visit eifishing.com for all the exciting details. Mark your calendars for September the 16th for a day filled of fishing, great memories, and your chance to win.
Attention, nature enthusiasts of Emerald Isle, the Wildlife Resources Commission, and the NC Museum of Natural Sciences need your help in locating a new to North Carolina species, the elusive blue land crab. Watch this short video for more info.
I'm Dr. Bronwyn Williams, Research Curator of Invertebrates at the North Carolina Museum of Natural Sciences. So it's been brought to our attention that really unique species to this area, blue land crab, has been spotted on Emerald Isle. It's a really interesting find, because it's never been reported from North Carolina before, and so we need your help to learn more about where it is, try to locate it, figure out kind of how extensive, if at all, this population is on Emerald Isle. So if you see this crab, and what you're looking for is fairly large crab, typically bluish tinted, about the size of a coconut, think about that. It's been described by some as fiddler crab on steroids. Looks like a cross between a ghost crab and a fiddler crab. You're not going to find it on the beach proper. It is a true land crab, so it's going to be up in the maritime forest areas or in people's yards. But if you do spot this, would really appreciate it if, you know, if you can get a photo, that's great. If not, if you can just identify it and contact us with the photos or without, using the information that we've provided here. Thank you all for your help with this. Again, nothing to be alarmed about, we just appreciate kind of your assistance in allowing us to learn more about this unique species to this area and this unique opportunity. Thanks again.
Join us for the Stuff the Cruiser event from August 14th to 18th. Help us fill a police car with essential school supplies to support Carteret County students as they head back to school. Let's watch the video.
Join us for the Stuff the Cruiser event from August 14th to 18th. Help us fill a police car with essential school supplies to support Carteret County students as they head back to school. Your donations make a difference in their education and future success. Items can be placed inside the designated police cruiser at the Emerald Isle Police Department at 7500 Emerald Drive from August 14th to 18th. If you wish to make a monetary donation, please bring it into the lobby and hand it to a customer service representative. Let's come together as a community and ensure every student has the tools they need to thrive.
We're now accepting Holiday Arts and Crafts vendor applications. Please call 252-354-6350 or apply on our website. Next up is the Police Educating the Public on August 15th. This month, we will review school bus safety and motor vehicle laws. This event is held in the Town Board Meeting Room next to the Police Department. It begins at 10:00 a.m. and will not exceed one hour. The next Golf Cart Advisory Committee meeting is on August 15th from 5:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. We will be hosting a blood drive with the American Red Cross. This blood drive will be held from 1:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. on Friday, August 18th at the Emerald Isle Community Center. Next is Coffee with a Cop. This is a chance to join your neighbors and the Emerald Isle Police Officers for coffee and conversation. This event is held in the Town Board Room on August 24th from 9:00 o'clock to 10:00 a.m. The next Planning Board meeting is going to be on August 28th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. On September 4th, the town's administrative offices and the community center will be closed in observance of Labor Day. Next up, the Neighborhood Watch Committee will hold its monthly meeting on Tuesday, September 5th. Join Emerald Isle Parks and Recreation for the 17th Annual Day for Kids on Saturday, September 9th. This free event runs from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and brings adults and children together for a fun-filled day of vendors, activities, games, music, and dancing. And the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 12th.
Excuse me, thank you, I sound pretty funny as a robot. Interesting, though. Item number 11 on the agenda would be the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. All right, item number 12, catch up with my papers, is in relation to the Board of Commissioners' election vacancy methodology. In summary, the State Board of Elections has indicated that they will not hold an election in 2023 for the Board of Commissioners seat currently held by Commissioner Jim Normile. Their position being that Commissioner Normile's appointment in 2022 should have been made for the entire unexpired term of former Commissioner Candace Dooley until 2025. Last month during closed session, the town consulted legal counsel, and our legal counsel does not concur with the view of the State Board of Elections. It remains the town's intention for the people to elect Commissioner Normile's successor. So I have a formal resolution that I will read and proclaim, and I will ask the board for a motion to adopt once I'm done reading it. Resolution of the Town of Emerald Isle, North Carolina Board of Commissioners, adopting a methodology for appointment of the upcoming vacancy of the seat of Commissioner Jim Normile. Whereas the Town of Emerald Isle town is a North Carolina organized, excuse me, a North Carolina town organized and existing pursuant to Chapter 160A of the North Carolina General Statutes. And whereas former Commissioner Candace Dooley was elected to the Emerald Isle Board of Commissioners during the municipal election of 2021 to serve a four-year term scheduled to expire in 2025. Whereas former Commissioner Candace Dooley resigned her position effective April 18th, 2022. Whereas pursuant to the statutory authority granted by NC General Statute 160A-63, a vacancy that occurs in an elected office of a city shall be filled by appointment of the city council, and a successor shall be elected at the next regularly scheduled city election. It's scheduled to be held more than 90 days after the vacancy occurs, and the person appointed to fill the vacancy shall serve only until the elected successor takes office. And whereas the Emerald Isle Town Charter provides that if a vacancy occurs in the office of mayor or commissioner, it shall be filled by the Board of Commissioners for the unexpired term. And whereas North Carolina General Statute 160A-3 provides that when a procedure that purports to prescribe all acts necessary for the performance or execution of any power, duty, function, privilege, or immunity is provided by both a general law and a city charter, then two procedures may be used as alternatives, and a city may elect to follow either one. And whereas pursuant to authority granted by NC General Statute 160A-63, and NC General Statute 160A... Excuse me, let me back up. Whereas pursuant to authority granted by NC General Statute 160A-63, and North Carolina General Statute 160A-3, by motion dated May 10th, 2022, the town was entitled to elect the procedures set forth in North Carolina General Statute 160A-63, and appointed Jim Normile by unanimous vote to finish the unexpired term of former Commissioner Candace Dooley until the November 2023 election. Whereas the intention of the Board of Commissioners was to fill the vacancy in former Commissioner Dooley's seat only until such time as the people of Emerald Isle could elect a successor. And whereas the North Carolina Board of Elections has indicated that due to a conflicting interpretation of the governing statutes, the Board will not agree, the Board of Elections will not agree to hold a municipal election in 2023 for the seat currently held by Commissioner Normile. And whereas the Board of Commissioners remains intent that fairness and equity demand that the citizens of Emerald Isle should determine Commissioner Normile's successor. And whereas to best effectuate this Board's intention that the Emerald Isle citizens select an individual to fill the seat, the Board of Commissioners hereby announces its intention pending certification of the election results to appoint the fourth highest vote getter in the municipal election of 2023 to the seat currently held by Commissioner Jim Normile. And whereas the Board of Commissioners intends to make this appointment during a special meeting to be held subsequent to the certification of the results of the 2023 municipal election and prior to the organizational meeting of the Board of Commissioners on December 12th, 2023. Whereas to provide the Board of Commissioners with enough time to consider the election results and certification of same before making this appointment, Commissioner Jim Normile has agreed to accept an extension of his current appointment through that organizational meeting of the Board of Commissioners scheduled for December 12th, 2023. Now, town hereby resolves as follows. Section 1, all recitals made above are incorporated herein as an integral part of this resolution. Section 2, this Board's prior action of May 10th, 2022, appointing Jim Normile to the seat of former Commissioner Candace Dooley, is hereby amended to extend the term of Commissioner Jim Normile until the winners of the 2023 municipal election are qualified and seated at the Board of Commissioners meeting of December 12th, 2023. Section 3, the Board of Commissioners hereby announces its intention pending certification of the election results to appoint the fourth highest vote getter in the municipal election of 2023 to the seat currently held by Commissioner Normile. Section 4, the mayor, town manager, and the town attorney shall have the authority to implement this resolution and shall have the authority to execute and deliver such documents as may be reasonably necessary for same. Adopted this 8th day of August, 2023, Jason Holland, Mayor. Sorry, that was a mouthful. I will now ask for a motion, is it pertains to the resolution of the town.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution of the Town of Emerald Isle, North Carolina Board of Commissioners adopting a methodology for appointment of upcoming vacancy for the seat of Commissioner Jim Normile.
Motion is on the floor, all in favor? Motion is carried. Before I move on to the next item on the agenda, I just want to make something clear on this particular item. Like I said in the resolution, like we talked about at the last meeting, the Board of Elections will not recognize a fourth bubble on that ballot. If you color in a fourth bubble on that ballot, the machine's going to stick it, spit it back out at you. The town, like we said, remains intent on the people choosing Commissioner Normile's successor. You will only have the opportunity for that machine to take your ballot if you have colored in three bubbles. First, second, and third obviously will be recognized by the Board of Elections. Whoever on the certified election results with the fourth highest vote getter, the Board has resolved to appoint that person. So just, I've read about it, read an email about it, read about the paper, the Board of Elections will, or the machine will spit out a ballot that has four bubbles colored in, but the fourth highest vote getter will be appointed to Commissioner Normile's seat. So just hopefully saving some trouble at the polls and hopefully providing a little bit of clarity. All right, that being said, we will move on to item number 13. We have Doug Huggett from Moffett and Nickel to give us an update on our Boat Channel Relocation Presentation. Good evening, Doug.
Good evening, everybody. I am Doug Huggett from the firm of Moffett and Nickel, and I'm located in Moffett and Nickel's Carteret County Office, located here, well, located in Morehead City. And we have an update to the ongoing saga of the alternative boat channel investigation that Moffett and Nickel has been doing for the town, looking for potential options to relocate your channel leading out of your boat basin. If some of you may remember, I was here a couple of months ago, I believe it was the June Board Meeting, and gave a little bit of an update as to where things stand or stood at that time. We have a little bit more of an update after looking into some funding options. So with the Board's commission, I would like to go back through and do a real quick run through for historical perspective of the presentation I gave before, it won't take more than two minutes, and then give an update just for transparency and information purposes on what we found out in regards to funding the next steps on this, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
So if I could get a slide presentation? It works. So if y'all remember, we, the Moffett and Nickel Environmental Team was charged with doing some environmental studies for some of the alternative channels that we had identified, specifically looking for shellfish and submerged aquatic vegetation, or what I will call SAV habitat. And September of last year, we did go into the field and did an initial survey for a fall SAV species, but we were required to go back out a second time in May of this year and do another survey within the channel boundaries for the, for a species that really only grows in the late spring and early summer. And so we did that in May. The results of the survey, first off, these are the two channel locations that we had identified through various other investigations as being potential alternative channels. You see, there's an alternative 2, which did have some seagrass, as indicated by the green circles. We also had an alternative 1 and a spur on alternative 1 called 1A, where we thought was very promising after our fall surveys, because we weren't finding any seagrass. But as I said, we were required to go back out in May of this year and do another survey. I apologize for all of the red and the pink, please ignore that, but just look at the green, both the green dots and the green polygons that are showing up in these channel boundaries. Those are either isolated occurrences of SAV, or the polygons were showing relatively dense growth of SAV, and these are some photos of what we did find in May. So that led us to some potential issues with obtaining the necessary state and federal permits for the channel relocation project. We had had back in 2021, a what we call a scoping meeting with the various environmental and permit agencies, and basically we heard very strongly from both the State Division of Water Resources, as well as the State Division of Coastal Management, that they have some pretty significant rules that prohibit new dredging of channels and basins and things of that nature through SAV habitat. The issues were even further complicated with the Division of Water Resources, because these waters are classified as outstanding resource waters, or ORWs, and the Division of Water Resources has stronger rules for protection of SAV habitat. of Water Resources has stronger rules for protection of SAV habitat. And they basically informed us that the likelihood of obtaining permits for the dredging of the alternative channel would be slim at best if there were SAV habitat there. So then if you'll think back to the May meeting, what, we made this presentation, and the guidance that was received from the Board and from the town was that the town still wanted Moffett and Nickel to move forward with project design and with permitting and use every trick that we know, all available efforts to try and get the permits from the state and federal agencies to allow the dredging of the alternative channel to move forward. So we were doing that, we've been looking into that, but since that meeting in June, we've had additional discussions with the state funding agency that has funded all of the survey work that we've done so far. This is the State Shallow Draft Navigation Fund. And again, the Shallow Draft Navigation Fund has funded everything that we've done up until now, but based off of communications with Kevin Hart, who was the Shallow Draft Program Manager, I think is his term, and I apologize for the slide being a little bit hard to read, but two different emails that Kevin Hart sent to us and the town back on July the 19th indicated that because the Shallow Draft Fund is mandated by state legislature to only fund projects whose prime principal purpose is navigation, and because one of the expressed purposes of the town's navigational search for a new channel was to provide for shoreline protection for those properties that are along the existing channel, the Shallow Draft Program has determined funding for the additional work, funding for the design of the project and for the permitting of the project is not available through the Shallow Draft Fund. So again, they had funded things up until now, but now they're saying that funding is not available. I'll also point out that while this wasn't in Mr. Hart's emails, I had had conversations with him on the phone, and he also expressed a severe hesitancy, I guess I can say, to fund the project moving forward due to the low probability that permits will be able to be obtained. In other words, the Shallow Draft Program really doesn't want to fund something with a low likelihood that the project can actually be constructed and completed. So that is kind of where we are with the most recent information on this project. Your funding opportunity that we thought that we had is kind of dried up on us. So where does that leave the town right now? Well, thinking forward for path forward, I really can only come up with two options at this point in time in my mind. First off, the town would have to identify and obtain additional grant funds to allow the work to go forward through, I don't know what the other grants may be, but there may be things out there. I guess I should also add that possibly the legislature could get involved and help out with that. Or item B is funding would need to be provided directly from the town to allow for the project design and the permitting to move forward. So that's kind of the update right now. Again, we're presenting this for full transparency, so everybody's aware of where this project stands at this point in time. I don't know if anybody has any questions, or if there's any other points that I need to expand upon, but I'd be happy to take any questions or whatever the Board's pleasure might be.
Thank you, sir. Given that this is the first time that everybody is hearing the, hearing this update, definitely not going to ask for any action one way or the other, but I will ask the Board if they have any questions for Mr. Huggett.
Not for Doug. I think in the future, maybe some follow-up with Ms. Jill, just from a legal standpoint, what other options may or may not be available for later time, not tonight, but certainly would like some time to work on that.
Anyone else?
Do we have any idea of what type of additional funding that would be needed to follow up?
Sir, the Moffett and Nickel team put a estimate together and provided that to the town back when we thought we still had funding available. Between the engineering work that we would need to do, the development of the plans, identification potentially of a disposal area, although that may not be necessary right off the bat, and as well as the permitting, I think that our estimate came in, amounted around $52,000 if I remember correctly. So that is the ballpark figure that we think that we would need to be looking at in terms of funding to get us through a permit decision. And then if permits are ultimately obtained, there'll probably be a little bit more in terms of preparing bid documents and construction management and things of that nature, if we were able to get to that point.
That doesn't include any dredging?
That is correct, sir. This is only for the project design and the permitting. The dredging cost would have to come later.
The estimate on the total cost?
Asking for total cost on the permit and the dredging?
The dredging was approximately 1.8 to 1.9 million.
1.8 to 1.9, thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions from the Board? Doug, thank you. Appreciate the update. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, sir. Glad to be here.
All right. Item number 14 on the agenda would be our public comment. There was a sign-up sheet by the door when you came in. I know we've got a big crowd tonight. If you missed the sign-up sheet, don't worry about it. Once we get through everyone or anyone that has signed up, if anyone else has a comment, if you just raise your hand, I'll identify you and I'll give you your time at the podium. So if you're here for public comment, you will get an opportunity to speak. Please try your best to limit the comments as close to three minutes per person as you can. When the three minutes is up, my good friend, Mr. Watts, I didn't forget this time, sir. He owed me a dollar. I didn't want to lose that dollar, so no pins, no this or that. So when your time's up, I'll hold our little trusty American flag up here. You don't have to stop mid-sentence, but if you would, finish your thought so that we can be respectful of everyone else here that's here for public comment. Yes, sir. Chief? Yeah, if you have your opportunity for public comment, if you don't want to hear the rest of them, or not interested in the comment from the Board or anything like that, we've got some more people that would like to come in. So we'll try our best to accommodate everybody, make sure everybody's heard, and we'll go from there. First commenter, please.
Ricky Taylor.
Good evening, Ricky. Reuben? Yes, sir. Before you box, I just hold that thing up.
Anybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ricky Taylor, Bog Sound Septic. Been working on Emerald Isle since 1976. Worked with Page Landscaping. Ninety-five, we started our own business, Bog Sound Septic. Done a lot of grading on Emerald Isle. We did a lot of these stormwater that the town provided us a model to go by. These new rules, it's really caused a lot of headaches with, and I know y'all got things to do, but I'd like to know how many complaints you ever had with the ones that we were doing? These little models that we were doing, put it in, have y'all had a lot of complaints on that? That's a question I'd like to have answered.
Well, we can meet and discuss how many complaints. I just want everybody to have an opportunity to be heard tonight.
Okay, all right. I'd like to see it go back to similar, we got some lots you're going to need to engineer plans. We got a lot of lots left on Emerald Isle that this will still work every day. All right, the next thing is the silt fencing. You, I don't know how many of y'all ever put up silt fencing, but you can't go on a virgin lot that has bushes on it and put a silt fence up like it's supposed to be put up. You can mark it, your surveyor can give you your survey, y'all do the permits, we've got limits to go by, we can flag it, but it's hard to put silt fence up. I've done it, it's hard. I don't know how many of y'all ever put it up, probably don't care, but it's not easy. And my concern is, you could clear the lot, then you could, then if you want silt fence in certain places, you could put it up. But to go there and put silt fence all the way around that lot before you ever start is just about impossible, if you do it like it's supposed to be. And my concern is, have we thought about this? If it's properly marked, your surveyor's going to give you points on your, your survey is going to give you, that should be fine enough. And if you need the silt fence in bad places or around the wet areas, I agree with that after it's cleared. And that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Joyce Rowe.
Good evening, Ms. Rowe.
My name is Joyce Rowe, and we have a place at 104 Pelican Court. Since my husband and I have been here this year, we have been quite concerned about our own safety in our neighborhood, because a neighbor across the street decided to construct a barrier right at the edge of the road. Our road is a dead end. We need shoulder space for people to turn around. There is no shoulder space now, and generally people either back out, which is dangerous, or they turn around in another neighbor's yard, who, if he put up a barrier, I'm not sure what would happen. We've asked multiple town officials to please look at it, please enforce the town's own right-of-way, and ask that the barrier be pushed back. So far, all we've heard is that that would be a little bit too inconvenient. Last week, I noticed a service vehicle parked on the side of the road. Now, because the barrier is so close to the edge of the road, the service vehicle had to be parked out in the road so that the driver could get out of the vehicle. There's almost no space left on the road once the, his vehicle was parked out there. A few days later, I noticed another vehicle, same thing, had to park out in the road, not much space. By the third vehicle, I decided to start taking pictures, and I am now trying to photograph every time when I know there's absolutely not enough space for an emergency vehicle to get down our road. I believe this is a real safety issue unless the town can absolutely guarantee that no service vehicle will ever be parked there if an emergency vehicle comes. Whenever my children, or my grandchildren, or my family come to visit, I have a responsibility to ensure their environment, under my purview, is as safe as it can possibly be. I believe the town has that same responsibility to owners, to renters, and to anybody else who visits here. I find it unbelievable that town officials are willing to do nothing, thereby putting my life, as well as the lives of many others, in danger. Once again, I ask town officials, please take the appropriate measures to enforce your own right-of-way on the space on Pelican Court. The effort to do so may be a minor inconvenience, but the decision to do nothing could be a tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe. Yes, ma'am.
Bruce Rogers.
Hey, Mr. Rogers, how are you?
How are you doing, Seamus? Good. My name is Bruce Rogers. I'm with Crystal Coast Construction here in Emerald Isle. I've been building here since 93. I've had my company for the last 20 years. I represent 30-some builders here who've got some problems with these new rules that have come into effect. The stormwater being one of the bigger ones for us, having to go and do an engineered stormwater for every single lot on this island, we believe is unreasonable. There's a lot of good lots out there that don't have any drainage issues, no localized flooding, but it's just unrequired. We do admit that there are a lot that do need engineering, but even then, the system that we've got put in place now is still unreasonable. We're having to go get an engineer, who are now backed up due to the number of engineered systems that are being required, wait weeks for them to design the system for us, we turn it in, the town turns around, sends it to a second engineer to have it reviewed, taking weeks again. We get it back, several of these guys have come through, and we've found that a lot of things that are required, these marks that aren't there, we take it back to our engineer to find out it is there, go back again to the town engineer. I mean, there are guys sitting in this room right now that are waiting three and four months to try and get this permit that used to take a few weeks. On top of that, we're extending out the building process, because we can't start this until we've got a signed contract and funding in place. So now you've taken three to four months of the time that we have, 12 months to build a house, and extended that out. We're ending up having to buy second insurance policies, having second closing on the loans to when we go beyond that 12-month period. I think there can be a better way to do this if we could get together with the builders in the town and understand your goals. The second would be the silt fence. Silk fence on a raw lot is dangerous. I mean, it's a wooded lot, there's a lot of elevation changes on most lots in this town, it's dangerous to have people trying to work through those woods to put up a fence, but then as soon as we go into clear, we're going to tear back out because the vegetation is so close to the fence, there's no way to remove it without tearing the fence down. Again, there's a simpler way that we can go in there, we can mark that vegetative line, delineate it out for the clearing purposes, and then put a fence up once it's safe and easy for it to go in there and do that. So I mean, what we're asking is just to have a little input into these processes, not only the ones that have already happened, but any that go into the future. If we could have builders help represent on the UDO committee, I think it would serve the town and the public better than what we're doing now.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Jimmy Farrington.
Good evening, Jimmy.
How you doing tonight?
Good evening, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to get some facts about the new rules and what's been going on. I spoke last meeting and don't even remember anything that I said, but I asked the county to give me the numbers on new construction in Emerald Isle. And for the year 2020, '21, and '22, the approximate new construction, this is completely new construction, not additions, remodels, or extra features like pools, garages, et cetera. The average is about 50 homes a year. Maybe that's a conservative number, but the average range is 214,000 to 1.5 million dollars. That's an average. The average taken from that is $540,000 per, per new construction. When you add that number up, that's $27 million a year, average, for these past three years. That's a lot of clams. My dad was a clamor, and that's what he used to say, that's a lot of clams. Of course, that really does a lot for our county, it does a lot for this town, and I think that these new rules and regulations, and of course, you know, we talked about it at the last meeting, is making a logjam, and it's going to make a big impact this year when you look at your numbers. I think it's pretty obvious. And I just, just want to ask you, please, to reconsider, pause it, do away with it, whatever you can do on some of these rules. We're not asking for you to not do a stormwater plan. A stormwater plan, just so the, the public knows, has always been in effect, and it was a handwritten stormwater plan, and that would be checked by your planner or whoever the assistant is of that planner, and that's how it was done in the past. I, I've heard, and I said this, I think, the last meeting, that a lot of people complain, but very few of those complaints were true. They weren't factual, and I was told that, and I would like to know that answer too, if you, you don't mind. But again, thank you for all you do, appreciate it. I love this town, I love this county, and I just don't want this to, to slow the process down and, and hurt anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Paige Taylor Ward.
Good evening, Paige.[1735.61]
whatever you can do on some of these rules. We're not asking for you to not do a stormwater plan. A stormwater plan, just so the, the public knows, has always been in effect, and it was a handwritten stormwater plan, and that would be checked by your planner or whoever the assistant is of that planner, and that's how it was done in the past. I, I, I've heard, and I said this, I think, the last meeting, that a lot of people, um, complain, but very few of those complaints were true. They weren't factual, and I was told that, and I would like to know that answer too, if you, you don't mind. But again, thank you for all you do, appreciate it. I love this town, I love this county, and I just don't want this to, to, to slow the process down and, and hurt anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Paige Taylor Ward.
Hi, my name is Paige Taylor Ward, and I live at 326 Live Oak Street. I too would like to talk to you about ordinances, enforcement, and like thereof. This is not the first time I've been here talking about this. I can't even remember how many times I've been up here. Ordinance 9.5.4 talks about placement of signs in the right-of-way. They're not supposed to be there. I was talking to Ronnie Watson, who put up a sign for his new building. He said the town came out and measured, and it was a little over four feet in the right-of-way. You had him move it, which is fine, but yet, when you ride around the town, even on my own street on Live Oak, on the Sound Side, we've got center blocks that have been sitting out there for maybe two months. There's a dumpster in the right-of-way on Reed Drive. There's a sign advertising a vacation rental for Blue Water that has floodlights on it on NC 58 and Elizabeth Street. I'd like for you to produce the North Carolina Department of Transportation encroachment agreement. If you can't do that, then I suggest you remove the sign. It's mind-blowing as to what you pick and choose, what we are enforcing, or what we're not enforcing, and it almost appears that if you don't like someone, you will have them move the sign. So take a good look at what you're doing. We wouldn't have a room full of people, nor would you have 12 people running for the seats that we elected you all to enforce. Thank you.
Thanks, Paige. Yes, ma'am.
Jeff Ward.
Good evening, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
I'm here to talk about CRS, and I don't mean can't remember stuff. Um, I'm going to talk a little bit about stormwater again. Seems to be a pretty hot topic, but I'm going to go a different direction. CRS is the Community Ratings System that FEMA puts out that kind of determines what our flood insurance rates are, and they use that rating system to assign a number, and based on that number is how they figure out what our flood insurance rates are. And they look at things that, like, what are we doing to maintain or control or decrease flooding or stormwater accumulation? And I look at a couple of things that are going on where, I know the canal is a, a hot topic, especially with Lee Street, but lack of culvert maintenance and repair, lack of maintaining the patency of Archer's Creek itself, and lack of stormwater drain cleaning and maintenance, all could affect the cost of flood insurance that we get through FEMA. You know, Atlantic Beach and Pine Knoll Shores, they hire companies to come in and either sewer jet or vacuum their stormwater drains, and that allows them to either blow out those stormwater drains or vacuum up sand and debris and completely clean them out, and, and otherwise, you're just manually picking up things that you can visually see and not cleaning the entire drain. I guess with the flooding that took place, we had a little, well, we had a pretty good shower last week, and we had the higher water signs out on Sound Drive near Cedar Street. I guess my question is, do we have the same service here? Do we hire people to come in with a sewer jet, with a, with a sewer vacuum, and do we clean out those storm drains e- every year or a couple of times a year like other towns do? If so, when was it last done? Who did it, and how much did it cost? Because when I look through the budget, I can't find a line item for that service. And I'm just worried that if we continue down this path, that we're going to end up having our FEMA status changed, and it's going to affect many, many residents' flood insurance on this island. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Yes, ma'am.
Roy Stabler.
Good evening, Ms. Stabler.
I didn't intend to speak, I just thought I was signing in.
You're, you're welcome to one way or the other, that happens a lot, no, no big deal.
But just to reiterate what, I'm Roy Stabler, a second-generation builder. I moved here in 1998, my dad's been building here since 82. To reiterate what a couple of people have said, um, first of all, the, I haven't had to deal with it yet, but the silt fence rule, that you have to put that up before you get a permit, unvegetate a lot, seems like that's kind of a no-brainer, we can figure a better way to do that. The engineered stormwater has been causing me some issues, um, just with the, you know, hiring a engineer, which they're so backed up, uh, takes lots of time, costs the homeowner money, you know, 1,500 to $2,000, but then, you know, that's for the plan. To implement the plan, I mean, something that would normally be, you know, a few thousand dollars that we would do, now you've got retaining walls to protect natural air, I mean, you've got 20, 30,000 dollars of additional cost on top of the plan. It's, like, some of this stuff is just a little crazy on lots that would be X-zone lot, no problem, we haven't had a problem in the past, uh, so that's something I think we should look at, too. We've got engineered plan that we get engineered, then we got to turn around, have it reviewed by engineer, that seems redundant to me as well, extra cost. Then, I guess the other thing, I just had a question on the Moffett thing, you know, the guy was told to use all his tricks at his disposal, um, why not look at it from a navigation standpoint instead of shore protection? Just seemed like a, just occurred to me as he was talking about it. I don't spend a lot of money on dealing with that kind of thing, and it seemed like maybe navigation is the way to go to get the funding, so that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir.
Justin Petrilli.
Good evening, Justin.
Hey, thank you, I'm Justin Petrilli. Uh, I started, um, my construction business, Banks Builders, about four years ago, so I'm a new guy on the island, but I'm from around here. Like a lot of the other builders, we share the same concerns. Uh, I think I'm a little bit different because I'm representing some younger builders who, you know, we hope to be building around here for a long time, so these, uh, are some changes that are going to affect us for a long time. Um, the first one, uh, following up on Rick, Bruce, Jimmy, and Roy, uh, the silt fence is unnecessary. I think staking or flagging has worked great so far. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we're concerned about it, I know that you already know that. Uh, the stormwater management is another one that, uh, is, seems overly complicated. We'd like to continue to be able to design it as a builder, uh, or hire an engineer on lots that are flood-prone, but the, the X-zone lots, um, we'd like to just be able to design it ourselves. Um, and then a third concern that we had, um, is some of the oceanfront lots, or all of my guests, um, are being moved from a 10-foot setback to a 15-foot setback, um, or, I'm sorry, vice versa, from 15-foot setback to a 10-foot setback, and we would, uh, like to, like to stick with the, yeah, oh, the, the first, I'm sorry, yep. Um, anyways, we'd like to have all of our space to build on our lots. We use every square inch of it, I can tell you. It's, it's difficult to build on some of these small footprints, um, or small lots with these large footprints that people are wanting to bring in, particularly on the oceanfront lots. So we're just hoping that we can, uh, you know, unless there's a very strong reason why the setbacks have been pushed back, um, that we can stick with what we've always had. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Ronnie Watson.
Good evening, Ronnie. I know you're tired seeing me, but, uh, you will see me one more time. You'll hold your flag?
Not yet.
Your dog?
Not yet.
I'm Ronnie Watson, what's left of me, 9102 Coast Guard Road, Emerald Isle. You know, uh, I want to correct, say one thing, and that's not really what I want to talk about, but I've talked about, I've talked to the mayor of Swansburg. You know, y'all, I'm really concerned about the budget and wasteful spending, as you know, and I've said this many times, but you know, the town of Swansburg is 9.5 square miles, Emerald Isle is 6.1 square miles. They have a total number of employees of 49, they have the total number of vehicles that's 30, but I want y'all to think about that. I don't like waste, and I, you know, like I've said before, if you ran your businesses the way this town's being run, you'd be broke in one year. I don't know how many of you in business have that, you need to think about it. The other thing I want to say is, you know, I had a sign, and, uh, I had a temporary sign, 30 days, it was going to be moved, paid a 30, a $75 sign fee, which was fine, but then I get a call from the assistant town manager saying I got to move my sign. And so, and then the next two things, I get two emails from the assistant town manager that the sign has to be moved. Well, I moved the sign, but I ride around the town, has any of y'all rode the streets? Have any of y'all rode the streets and really looked how many violations there are? There's violation after violation after violation, and not one of you has said anything about it to me, because it's been sitting there for years, the old boat trailers, trash dumpsters, signs, cars, you name, they're in the right-of-way. But I feel like, maybe y'all don't like me, that's okay, but you know something? The lieutenant governor's coming here, and I think you should be honoring him to come to Emerald Isle, because he's elected, we got somebody we can go to. But, you know, it just don't make any sense, but it was, it's going to be moved August 18th, but you see, I've got it moved, it's off the right-of-way. It was four foot eight inches on the right-of-way, but yet you've got things sitting right next to the road, and you need to ride around and look at it before you start worrying about a diagram sign, you got other things you need to worry about. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Roger Fult.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Roger Fult, RHI General Contracting. I'm here to represent the builders on Emerald Isle. First off, thank you for your time, and I, I just wanted to speak about the stuff that's happened, you, you've already heard about the different rule changes and stuff. I want to talk a little bit more about the effect of it. So about a year ago, and I've said this at several meetings now, but about a year ago, I, in my line items for building, uh, for permits and fees, I would have about a $3,500 line item there, which would cover. At this point, I'm up to $10,000 on that line item because of all the different changes that have been made that are requiring us to do, um, engineering of stormwater, or requiring us to do topographical surveys, are requiring us to do a lot of things that were not in place, that were, that now are in place. So here's the result. First off, you've got those fees. The second thing that's happening is you have four months, five months, I, I've heard as much as six months getting a building permit. That's crazy. We, when we do a home build and we have a bank involved, we have a one-year window to build that house. That's, that's what the standard bank loan, or construction loan is, a one-year loan. So what's happening is, we're spending four months of that year, at least, getting a building permit, and then we're trying to cram the build into six months or less, and with these houses, that's not possible. I mean, we, and so what's happening on the back end is, it's costing money because we have to re-up our insurance, we have builder's risk insurance when we build these houses. Now, the thing about builder's risk, it also, um, the builder's risk does not cover wind and hail on Emerald Isle, so now you're left paying for wind and hail coverage, and you're having to extend all these coverages because you don't have the window you need to build the house, and then there's also charges from the bank when you have to extend your bank loan. So all of that together is thousands of dollars that we are having to spend now that was not having to spend a year ago, and I would just like to have the town maybe look at this and see if we can't come up with some resolutions for this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Roy Parker.
Thanks for coming, Roy.
Rob O'Brien.
Is there a Brian in the room? Rob O'Brien?
He might be outside.
He's not here? Okay. Uh, told Mr. O'Brien's not here.
Um, let's see, I'm sorry, uh, Dino and Donna. Reer? Reer, maybe?
How's it go? Sorry. Dino and Donna.
Looks like R-H-E-R.
Is there a, a, first name Dino and Donna in, in the room with us?
Donna.
All right, if they come back in or they figure who it is, I'd love to have them up. Uh, we'll, we'll move forward for now, though.
Mary Ann Waldrop.
I can save my time.
Thank you for coming, Ms. Waldrop.
Paxton McLean Holtz.
Good evening, Holtz.
Crikey from sitting so long. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate y'all letting us speak, and Matt, I appreciate you always answering an email or a phone call, no matter how long it takes, I really appreciate that. I have never protested a tax rate. Occasionally, I have protested a tax value on a piece of property that I own, and I'm extremely concerned about this new setback for oceanfront property, because what that does is take 10 feet wide away from my oceanfront property, and it's critical that we are allowed to use every square foot possible. I have one oceanfront lot. For 20 years, I walked ev, I worked every Saturday turning my handicap-accessible weekly rental for rent. I worked right alongside the team of, of housekeepers and, and the pool guy, I patrolled the yard for cigarette butts, and I was very proud to have a supremely handicap-accessible cottage for rent on Emerald Isle, on the oceanfront. But I've worn out, and I finally sold it, and I'm pleased that the buyer is keeping up the handicap accessibility. But I have another oceanfront lot, I was planning to build a handicap-accessible beach cottage that I did not have to retrofit after my son suffered an accident and became a caudaplegic at age 21. All right. The lot's 75 feet wide, it averages 270 feet deep. Now, you've taken away 10 feet of my land. What concerns me is not only my plight, but the plight of others on Emerald Isle who have lots that are 75 feet wide and 150 feet deep. lots that are 75 feet wide and 150 feet deep, that were planted by my father and the other developers of Emerald Isle, 75 by 150. Now, it's been very popular for somebody to buy an old cottage, tear it down, and build a nice new one. Well, you have limited those people's ability to do that. I'm just trying to come to you from a businesswoman's standpoint. If I can't utilize my six-bedroom septic permit, if I can't put a handicap-accessible house with a ramp, which is going to take up some space on my oceanfront lot, then I'm going to go to the county and say, my lot's not worth what it was last year. And if this word gets out, how many people that own lots that are 100 feet by 150 feet wide, how many others are going to do the same? It could have a horrible domino effect on the values of real estate on Emerald Isle. Please don't let that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Earl Boyd.
Mr. Boyd here with us? Earl Boyd?
Uh, he left.
Mr. Boyd left?
He left.
He left? Okay, thanks.
That was the last one.
All right. Thank you all very, very much. Item number 15, comments from town clerk?
No.
Town attorney?
Manager.
Yes, sir.
Comments from the board of commissioners. Board Commissioner Taylor?
Just want to thank for the 30 years of, close to 30 years of service for our retired police officer. That's amazing that somebody in public service can do that for so long. And hearing people talk about him, that's something. That's pretty amazing, so. Thanks for all the comments for everybody. I'm taking a lot of notes here, and I appreciate you coming to the meeting and talking about it. Got a lot of notes through you now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Finch?
I'd just like to say a big thank you to all our lifeguards and for all the outstanding work that they've done this year. And I'd just like to extend a warm welcome to Officer Lewis and Mr. Ruth for planning. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Commissioner Metz?
Thank you, everybody, for coming and being civil. That's, that was very nice. I'd like to welcome our planner. We have a UDO committee meeting tomorrow with some of you people and our new planner, and hopefully we can get some of these issues resolved. Certainly going to work hard to try to do it. Thank you for coming.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Vogel?
Well said, sir. I would encourage the builders with, I think there's a lot of middle ground that can be found. And attending those planning board meetings and working with town planners is so, so important. But appreciate everyone's comments. I mirror my colleagues' comments. And Paxton, I was right there with you on Saturdays sometimes. It's one of the only fully handicap-accessible properties as a vacation rental in the state of North Carolina. And I very much appreciate that. You brought that here and are looking to hopefully carry that forward. I work with Ms. Violet, too, on a regular basis, so. But appreciate everyone being here. Appreciate all the comments. I, too, have lots of notes and things to process and some phone calls to make, so. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Norma?
With the humor first or last? Last.
Love to end with a good joke.
I'd start with the humor. Little Irish humor won't hurt. I noticed in the proclamation, y'all extended my stay by a month. You didn't tell me that part. So I, I think that's worth a pancake breakfast at someplace at some point. But thanks for the one-month extension.
Thank the builders for coming. As we talked about last month, in regards to the UDO, I think that last segment was about 400 pages. Sounds like there's two good items that need to be discussed. I mentioned that last month, and I think they meet tomorrow. I'm not on that committee, but that committee with the builders and the UDO team meets. Sure they can find a good path forward to make adjustments as necessary. I don't know what those adjustments are. I'm not recommending anything. I'm not on that committee, but that'll take place tomorrow, so that's good. What I had planned for tonight, real brief, we just closed the fiscal year. And so with that, we begin getting mounds of stats, facts, figures, a bunch of data. And, you know, I love that part. I don't know why. It's sickening, but I love that part. I just wanted to point out just one little stat and offer a quick compliment to our EMS crew. So the compliment is, this past fiscal year, our EMS team ran just under 600 calls. In other words, the ambulance goes out, has a paramedic team in there, and off they go. As you will recall, we've got an ambulance and a paramedic team at Station 1, ambulance and paramedic team at Station 2. Here's the stat, and I offer this in a good way, that whomever that next board is, this is one you need to write down to watch on how we position for the next season, the next busy season. The big stat is this. 60% of the time that we dispatch an ambulance and the team to the scene, to a victim, if you will, a patient, they transport that person to either Morehead City, Camp Lejeune Trauma Center, or to the landing zone over there by Western Carteret. 60% of the time, they're making that transfer. 60% of the time, we're taking one of our key assets out of play. Are you following me? 60% of the time, one ambulance is off the island. It's a good thing. It's a great service. They are really good. They've got me two times. I'm very thankful for them. That's a true statement. But that 60% of the time, we've got one box. Very fortunate that in Indian Beach, when we need help, they come, and vice versa. We will go there as well. Same with Western Carteret. If that one box, the ambulance, is dispatched, depending on where the next call is, which east end or west end, depends on, does the 911 dispatch send Indian Beach or someone from the mainland over to help? Good news, bad news? Good news is they come, and that's awesome. And we are reciprocal in that. Bad news is, instead of a four-minute or four-minute 30-second, five-minute in the summer because of traffic, response time, that response time grows. You follow me? Maybe six minutes, seven minutes, eight minutes, nine minutes, if you have a brain injury, if you have a heart attack victim. So just point that out, that, compliment to the EMS, they do a lot of calls. They're very good. I know we're all very thankful to have them. And that's a great stat to write down. And when January rolls around, after my one-month extension, and we begin planning and positioning for the next busy season, please recall, 60% of the time, we've got one out of pocket. But compliments to EMS and thanks, ma'am.
Thanks, sir. Thanks very much. Thanks for everybody here, board, staff, and everybody in attendance. I appreciate and value all of you. Be safe getting home tonight. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.